Mr. Chair, you are live and we are good to go.
All right, we'll start the meeting right at 7:00. Start with roll call.
Sheldon Cohen.
Chris Kombiasky.
Sarah Gutierrez.
Gail Linden.
And Rick Pollan. We will move on to approval of the agenda. I believe we're looking for a modification to remove item six and potentially postpone item seven based on the current board or current commission members that are here.
Mr. Chair, if I might suggest, uh, chapter six, or I'm sorry, item number six, which is the Ludlow House, has requested a table to the next meeting. A lot of the information that they had is not in here. Thanks for coming.
I'm sure what you were here for.
So that, so that would be, you know, as a courtesy to them, there is some information that they still need to get into us, and they've indicated they certainly could do so, but it couldn't be for tonight, so that's with that. And then the item seven, I don't know if you want to take them with two separate votes because you may still want to discuss it, but the planning commission priority list and the selection of additional work project, again, missing four people, there's a fair amount of input that's not going to be here this evening, and that's something you can discuss, you don't have to do that one now, but in the approval of the agenda, I would suggest making the modification for the site plan on Ludlow.
I'll make a motion, a motion to amend the agenda to table item number six, the new construction at 10104 Ludlow, to the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Moving on to approval of minutes from February 27, 2023. Any comments?
Yeah, question. This is a transcript.
Yes.
Okay, and I recognize minutes are more work than just a transcript. I assume the transcript is software.
No.
No? A pure transcript is just, I don't think it's necessary because it, I just think it's too detailed. I mean, I don't need to know that you asked, it was okay to dim the lights.
It's, you know, they put it in there and I understand that, but it's actually more work for them to do a transcript and me to edit it. I might as well do it.
Yeah, I recognize that.
I can ask them to tone it down a little bit for the future, but this is what you have before you for approval.
And the other thing is, I think it gives an opportunity for people who might want to challenge it to chew on a lot more than they might otherwise. I mean, a minute, the minutes, as I understand them, really just have to say, you know, this, the people presented their plan, there was a full discussion, public discussion was requested and a motion was made to approve it or deny it or whatever it was.
The city attorneys asked for a little bit more description because the zoning board of appeals in historic have different avenues of appeal. The planning commission, they just started doing that because they were doing the other two thousand.
All right, I'll defer.
So I would ask them to tone that back a little bit.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from February 27, 2023.
Second.
I'll see.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item five, matter of site plan review for a new house at 12787 Borgman. Hank, I'll let you pick it off.
Just to start off real briefly and then I'll let them take it and come back to me. What you have here is you have a demolition and a new house at 12787 Borgman. The house that was there or that is there currently has had a myriad of problems over the years, so it's not, I mean, I've been in the house and it's, it's not something that really could be saved in any capacity. So what you have here is a tear-down new house on 35,000-plus square foot lot, and what I would like to do, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, is to allow the applicants to go first. I do want to point out that with this project, you need five votes to pass, and we have five here, so they will need 100% of the votes here. They are eligible to ask for a table for the low, low quorum count anytime up until the vote. So, but I just want to be on the record as saying that they need all of your votes in order to pass anything this evening. So that having said, Mr. Chair, if it's your pleasure, I'd like to turn it over to them.
Go ahead.
Should I stand up there or? Yeah, and also you're going to have to speak into microphones because they, they will not be able to hear you unless you come to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, I'm Jeremy. I stand before you again. I'm not sure if you all, who was on the planning commission five years ago when I built the house across the street, but when I started building that house, I had not met my wife yet, and well, this house became available and her style and my style are a little different, and she wants to build a house. So, that being said, we are committed to Huntington Woods. We own businesses in Huntington Woods, if you didn't know, and we just want to beautify our street, you know? So we've hired some nice people to put together a nice drawing for us and nice plans, and I hope you enjoy the show. It's wonderfully created, done, so I'll turn it over to Arik.
Hi, my name is Ari Green. I'm the architectural designer of the house. Want to go over, Hank, if you can, show into the site plan, the architectural site plan, start with that. First of all, the location of the house is the first house west to the Bronx subdivision. So this house is almost a connecting between the large lot and the small lot, and that the way the, the house design is, that's the most east part of the house, the close to the Bronx is almost like a bungalow shape, and then the other side is more of the range shape that's more applied to the large lots. The house is basically has three major parts, three sections. The most, maybe if you look at their plan or the elevations?
You want the plan or you want the?
The plan, let's look at the floor plan.
You want a floor plan?
The floor plan, yeah.
Okay, you want our basement or first floor?
First floor, please. If you look at the first floor plan and then after we look at the elevation to emphasize that, but you can see that the most right-hand side, which is the east side?
Left side.
Left side, I'm sorry, the left side, this is the garage side, the mudroom and the pool room. So basically, this is the utility side of the house. Then in the center of the house, that's where the living part of the house, which is the kitchen, the dining, the living room area, the entry to the house, and then to the right side, which is the west side, this is the sleeping area, which is the primary bedroom and another sleeping suite. Now, if we can look at to the elevation, we can see how it translates to the elevations. You can see on the top drawing on the left-hand side, it looks like a house, but actually this is the garage, and then we have the range part, which is the middle part, that's the living part, and then on the right-hand side, that's the, what are called the sleeping part of the house. Also on the house, what we have, for a long house like that, and many houses, as ranch is long, this one is kind of broken down into different areas, enhancing the 3D appearance on the street, so it's not just a flat, long house. We have some nice, long front porch in the front, and we're using different materials. We're using stone, we're using stucco, and this is basically the only two materials on the house, and then we have the other third material will be the metal roof that we are proposing on the top. The house, the garage side, the garage doors are actually facing the side, and also what we did with the garage side, we actually pulled it away as much as possible from the house on the Bronx side, just to give it more privacy, and also that leave on the west side, where we have the large lot on the other side, that's where we have the house farther into the west, so we're kind of keeping a good distance from both neighbors. On the house, we also have, if we go back to maybe the back elevation, on the back elevation in the middle, you see there are three arches doors there leading to a back patio, covered patio, which is enclosed, we kind of in a U shape between the two, when the left and the right areas, and then it's gives some privacy to the homeowner and also to the neighbors. And at the backyard, also, we have, if we go now to the site plan, or maybe to the landscaping plan, you can go at this point, the landscaping plan, you see that next to the garage side, under the pool, there is a shed. There's our storage shed, as we are planning to enclose the equipment, the pool equipment in it. So we put a shed over there, it would be convenient for the pool, for storage of the pool, and also it's blocking the sport court. The design of the shed is in the same design language, maybe you can look at the shed drawings on the last sheet, is the same design language as the house. The size of the shed, the storage shed, is actually like a one-car garage, okay, just for proportion. It's actually usually lower than more car, one-car garages, although the size is exceeding the maximum that is allowed by the ordinance. We have 200 square feet, we allowed only 100. Doing that, obviously, we know, we are aware that we have to go to zoning board of appeal to ask for this permission. Also, by doing the extra 100 square feet, we also push out, push us also on the lot coverage, so we know we have to go for zoning board of appeal on that. If we cut in half the shed, then we are complying with the shed requirement and the lot coverage, then we don't need to go to the ZBA for that. So that's, we already actually apply for zoning board of appeal for that. Reason for doing this garage, I'm sorry, this shed, is to enclose the, again, like I said before, the pool equipment and provide enough storage for when you have a pool and there's a lot of toys and we have a sport court and all the furniture, so that's a good storage. And also the size of the shed in proportion to the overall large lot is really minimal. Any other items that I need to know? On the house, we are going to use all aluminum-clad windows, all insulated, all is going to be done in the very high level of architecture and materials, et cetera. There's maintenance-free, basically, all the materials we are proposing, and there will be beautiful landscaping that support and enhance the house, and that's actually, I will segue now and introduce Tim, who's from Michael Doolin Associates, landscape architect, and he can go over the landscaping plan.
Good evening. I'm Tim Shoemaker from Michael J. Doolin Associates, landscape architects. So today, in company with the house, we have a conceptual landscape plan to give you guys an idea of what we're thinking. So starting in the front, there's a horseshoe driveway to allow the homeowners, their family and, say, visitors to access the home and park within the lot rather than jamming up the street. And to accompany that, there's evergreen planting bed in the, we'll call it the middle island. So on the bottom side of it there, there's like five evergreen trees, and we'll berm that area up to create a little bit of height from the street, so that would help buffer the view of the east side of the house. But then the evergreen band lowers down to more of a hedge in front of the door so that the front door is appealing and opening to visitors and doesn't conceal it from the street. And then there could be a couple canopy trees at the west side to kind of anchor that and then add some substance to the road as well. And then as you move into the site, you know, you have the service court, the garage faces the east side there. We plan on taking a small hedge down the property line to help buffer the new driveway in that space from the adjacent house, because that's where those lots are smaller and it's a little bit tighter to the property line to the other side. And then as Arik said, the shed will block the view of the sports court from the road in addition to some of the plantings there, that that will almost be not visible from the road completely. In the fence, for the backyard, we have to have a fence for the pool code, so the fence would come off the southeast corner of the garage, extend south, connect into the shed. The shed will function as part of the pool barrier, and then it connects to the property line. East property line wraps all the way down the south property line, comes up the west side and connects back to the southwest corner of the house, enclosing the whole backyard. And all the way around the perimeter, there's going to be a mixture of deciduous and evergreen plantings to help buffer views from adjacent living spaces in the other properties. The house to the south also has a pool, so that'll help buffer their space. The house to the east, their backyard is similar to the sports court, we have evergreen band there to help buffer the two spaces. And then same thing on the west side, there'll be a little evergreen there to block their living space, which is pretty far into their site, actually. And then in the core, the backyard, there's the covered terrace where you come off from the living area, and then that sprawls out into a patio for the kids to run around, a small fire pit sitting area, and then obviously a 20-by-40 pool in the center of the space with patio around it, on three of the sides and grass meeting on the south side. In this site, I don't know if you guys driven by, this site has major water issues. Like you drive by now, the whole backyard is standing water, so the whole, there's a lot of engineering complications in this site, where almost the whole pool area is being elevated up just to give them some usable space, and then it sheds the water to the back property line, and then we'll have to do a drainage system to help capture some of that water and filter it into the, we're requesting access to the city system because all of the adjacent lots dump on this lot right now, and there's no, there's no way to gravity drain this lot. All the water from the west, the water from the south, and the water from the east, all drained to this lot, as it's likely the one that wasn't developed over the years. So there's major, major issues we have to accomplish there. And then the house also, if you looked, has picked up a little bit to help get it above because the site is so flat, and there's a lot of grading issues as well. Challenges, not really issues. Do you guys have any questions regarding the site or back to the house or?
Where does the fence start and end in relationship to the yard and the pool?
Let me see, I can show you right here, it's kind of hard to see on that screen.
Right, and I, it was hard to see on here, so I wasn't?
Yep, so the fence, the fence is going to start at this back corner of the garage.
Okay.
Come back here along the patio.
Okay.
And it'll be filtered on both sides with plantings, tied to the shed, stop during the shed, pick back up here.
Okay.
Come down the property line, come down this whole property line, which this side, both of these sides are already fenced with a chain link fence, so we would do a cool compliant aluminum picket fence, which is pretty standard, and then it returns back down here, pops out about four feet because there's some existing large trees here, so we pop out around those so those can remain on the property line, and then connects back into the house here, which is next to the master bedroom. So it closes the whole backyard and, actually, I think all three of these sides already have an existing fence.
Okay, and so then that's just shrubbery that, you know, is next?
Yeah, this would just be plantings here.
Right, and then next to the east property, that's all shrubbery is just there, no fence.
Yeah, this would just be shrubbery here, yeah, just because this is, you know, pretty tight in here, and then there are patios right here, so just to soften the view of the motor court, and there's a couple of large trees.
And they don't have a fence on that side because there's small?
No, I think the fence is just, there's two lots here, one house, one house, I think the fence is just from this tree back, and then maybe returns down this property.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the eastern house in the Bronx didn't have a fence that was running by the service drive.
Yeah, no, not, nothing right here on this one, yep.
Okay.
But the current house does have a fence kind of in this spot right here, that returns back, so there might be partial fence in that spot right here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, then I'll go ahead and go through some of the items on here, and then of course they can reserve the right to go answer any questions that they might have, if that's all right.
What?
Okay, so I'm going to go through kind of the same thing, only different with kind of what we got going on here. First off, I want to say, you know, the height, the front yard, the side yard setbacks, they meet all that, they meet the rear yard setback. They're over on the lot coverage, but again, part of that is driven by the need to have a slightly larger storage facility in the backyard. So if you take a look, what they're looking at is, it's actually not even a full percentage point for that, but having said that, that's a province of the zoning board of appeals. They're under the maximum house size for this house, they've done that, but I wanted to kind of go over the variances and some of the notable things for this. If you take a look, in your package is a letter from Drainage and Grading from NOAC and Fraus, and since we have this page up, I'll address that first. Basically, what they've got here is a lot that is admittedly very low, and it does have a water problem. Michael Doolin Association Associates again, and Art Green have been involved in the conversations with NOAC and Fraus, trying to come to some sort of agreement that will work for them to contain as much stormwater on site. So nothing, even if you approve this tonight, nothing will happen until that is agreed to from NOAC and Fraus. So that would be a condition, that they comply with the engineer's requirements on the property, on the site, prior to the issuance of a building permit, and they understand that. They've been really very good about working with it, there's been a lot of back and forth conversations. If you take a look at the design of this, there's a couple of things here that I also wanted to point out, and I'm going to use my cursor here and show you the front. If you take a look at the way this is, it comes in and then it widens out here and it goes past here. This is actually something that's going to come back before you probably in the summer, and part of the reason for that is, is that you have a narrow requirement that you can't have over 10-foot in the driveway, which is all well and good until you get a couple of people pulling in different ways, and then you got to back somebody out onto the street on both ways. So what they actually have done and created is kind of a bypass lane, and the bypass lane will allow somebody to pull past each other. So what it's going to do is, it's going to mean that when this comes back to you, and I don't want to convolute their issue with what's coming for you, and what I wanted to talk about also on the priority list, is that they have a way, there's, there's a way to make this work better, but in order to do that, they're going to have to allow larger wits in the front yard for that, and perhaps even some, some coverage issues with as far as what it is. What they've done is with the front here, is they've taken, they've raised this up, and that'll do two things. One is, with all the screen, it also serves to deaden a lot of the noise, and you're going to hear me refer to that, but green deadens noise. It also drinks water at an incredible rate. So when you see the perimeter of the entire lot, which is admittedly wet, covered with shrubs, trees, and, you know, and beds and berms, that's to help drink the water as much as it is for aesthetics. It's a byproduct, but it does work and it does help, and Tim might be able to address the substance to that. But if you take a look at all the trees, all the shrubs, the trees by the sport court, the trees between that and the proposed shed, and then along the property line, all of that will help to eliminate a water situation from which there currently is no remedy, and is part of their proposal. So that's the one thought. Talk for a minute about the shed here. Could they do 100-square-foot shed? Yes. Does it make sense? Not necessarily, and that's why the zoning board of appeals will be called in to play on this. By having them have the double-sized shed, it allows their pool equipment to go into the inside of the shed, which again, does two things. One, obviously, it's storage, instead of having it outside, visible site, it helps to contribute to the aesthetics. Secondly, it also will help deaden the noise, so pools, pool equipment tends to be noisy, and because that's there and inside, the noise will be deadened significantly on that. Now, the other storage there is, I'm going to assume, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, sports court equipment, off-season pool chairs and lounges and stuff like that that goes along with the particular type of pool. I will point out that the house next door, which is to the west of that, got a variance for a much larger outside building for the same thing, so they have almost something which is the size of a extra garage, if you will, that's in their back corner of their lot, for a very similar reason. Doesn't mean that it's going to go through, doesn't mean that it is or isn't, but it means that they have a case that they can make to the zoning board of appeals for them to decide on that. So along with that, there's a couple other things on the outside that you should be aware of. One is, is that where my cursor is going now are air conditioners, and this is a generator. This will require the neighbor's permission, which I understand they have, but I don't have documentation of that yet at this point.
Terry Reese.
Pardon me?
Terry Reese.
Okay, well, they won't, they won't be writing it today.
Cal actor, I'm reading.
But the thing with that is, is that that'll have to be happened before those locations are approved. The other things, and if you take a look at on the outside here, you have a window well that's in the front, okay, which can't be there according to the code, but in order to deal with that, it's a simple fix, and I have had conversations with Mr. Green, and he's, they could flip it this way, just flip the bed on a different wall in the basement, put it to the side where it'll work, and relocate the generator to one of a number of places that would be, some of them perhaps not even needing the neighbor's permission. But that can all be done and handled, but I did want you to know that because I did, you know, this way, when you call out the window wells, they can have it. The other thing with the window wells is, is they're a little too deep, and I don't mean deep depth, I mean deep as far as out from the house, so those, I've been assured by a final copy, will be complying with what our codes are, so you can take a look at that. So that's for this. So let's go back and take a look at, I might as well start from the beginning here. What would I do? So here, when you take a look at the lot, and again, as Eric has gone ahead and pointed out, this lot over here where my cursor is, that's the Bronx lot, so those are the 50 by 125 lots, and then here we put a 35,000-square-foot lot next to it. So there's going to be, you know, there's going to be more. When you take a look at this here, you see where they've gone and had the architectural plan right here, and the reason that I point this out is so that you can see what the next comment is going to be. When you go to the elevations on this side, where did I go? Right here, you'll see the garage. Their plantings of the shrubs over there will do two things. One is, as they come in or out of the garage, those shrubs will also help with noise, and they'll also help to deaden any headlights that face that house because of the location and where it is. So there's double thought into putting the shrubs in the landscape plan in there. It's actually flushed out pretty good because if you take a look at the height of the car here, I can't tell what kind of car that is, but if you take a look at that and you see like the height of that, it comes up to approximately the first bar on that, the shrubs are going to be higher than that. So your headlights are not going to be shining into this guy's bedroom at night, which is a real nice feature and a really good, really good way to go for this. If you take a look at the front, and I want to go through the front elevation on this too, this is not a front-facing garage, but a side-facing garage, which adds immensely to the aesthetics on Borgman. If you take a look at the windows in here, they match the windows on the right side of the house, so there's compatibility between the house here and the house here, so that's kind of a nice tie into that. Architecturally, for this type of thing here, although metal roofs are not common to Huntington Woods... Architecturally, for this type of thing here, although metal roofs are not common to Huntington Woods, there's only a couple of it, they've broken this up here with a stucco, and then they have a bank of windows for like a clear story across the top, which also helps to break up the, uh, window and the architectural design. They have stone for here, for your columns, and your stucco, which goes in through here, and the stone design picks back up here. As far as architectural relief, again, with the stone, you also have the balcony, which is, uh, which you can see over here, you can probably see a little bit better over here. And then you take a look at the sides, on all sides of the house, there's a tremendous amount of fenestration, which is really nice to see, because it allows for, you see what they have here, this is on the back of it, and then here's on the garage side. So it allows for, um, there to be a breakup, not monotony. Nobody's looking at large expanses of walls, they're looking at architectural design, which is consistent with what we looked at, what we wanted for the master plan. Uh, okay, here's your three in a row, and, um, it's unfortunate that they don't have anything long enough to show all three houses in their entirety, because the house that you have here is real close to the scale for the house that you have here, and then over here, so you can kinda see an idea of the houses to this way, which are in the Bronx. It's an entirely different subdivision. And then you see over here, which is more consistent with what they're designing here. So this is, this is where they're at with it, and if you get an idea of the ridge peak here, it's not much higher than the ridge peak here. There is a second floor on this house in this corner. So what they've done here with the stucco, what they've done here with that is to try to add some balance to the house. So that's kinda the three in a row, to the extent that they can actually get it all on one page. So I, I do appreciate the effort for that, because it's not necessarily easy to do. Then if you take a look in the back, um, okay. So if you take a look in the back and you see what the roof line is, this is gonna follow the same type of thing. This is the shed. You're gonna have venting, you're gonna have high vents, you're gonna have low vents. And the room is gonna make a big difference. This wall's here, if you take a look at it, Eric, that's gonna be insulated or non-insulated heat in space?
Probably insulated.
I would, I would, I would think, just, if nothing else, to keep the temperature, the climate, a little bit better for any of the, uh, equipment, the pool equipment that's gonna be in there in the winter months. Um, this over here also gives you a little bit of a better cut for what it, with the sports court and that. And even depending on how they end up working this out with NOAC and Fraus, there's even ways to put storage and retention facilities under the sports court. So there's, there's a lot of different ways that they could do different things with this. So I am confident that they will reach an agreement with NOAC and Fraus, because, one, they're gonna need it to build this, and, um, two, it just makes all the sense in the world. So if you take a look at the design, and, uh, Eric has already explained this, this right here is this, it's not a huge oversized garage, it's a fairly basic garage for this size house, you know, your two-and-a-half car garage, um, which you're basically showing right in here. The mudroom, the flow of the house architecturally is decent, uh, though we don't really so much get into that. Here, they've gone ahead and given us roof plans with pitches, which shows you what's going where. And again, you can see how they reflect on the outside, on the, uh, on the elevations, and there was one more thing I wanted to show you, and now I can't find it. Oh, okay. So when you take a look at the grades and everything that you've got right here, what you're looking at here is what they have now. So I can't blow this up that much more to see it, but you do have it. You see the grades, and you see the fall of the land that they have in and around here. That'll show you that the water is flowing to that part of the land. So they're going to have to show, they're going to have to work with NOAC and Fraus to come up with that. But these are the numbers that they're proposing, and these numbers here are the numbers that exist. So there's a substantial amount of water that's flowing by design, by nature, um, and through development to there. And the people that had this house prior to Mr. Wolf haven't done anything to correct it. So it, it's, and it's fairly substantial, I mean, it's not like there's a couple inches of water on the ground, there's significantly more. So that's kinda where they're at with that. I did wanna talk to you about, uh, the rest of the variances, the maximum lock covers, uh, fifteen point one nine. It's fifteen, it's, I'm sorry, sixty-six square feet more is what they need. It's, uh, fifteen, it's fifteen percent is what's allowed, and it's fifteen point one nine, so they're looking at sixty-six square foot variance for the scheme of thirty-five thousand plus square feet. So that's kinda where that is. And then, um, the two-hundred accessory structure, um, again, that's something that they can explain, or that, they can go to the zoning board of appeals. Um, and again, the sound deadening concerns was there for that. It's not that you have to rule on the variances, but they're giving an explanation for the why they need it, may help ease your mind as to why it exists in the first place. Parking and circulation, which is the third variance, it shows what the depth is, and they have it, uh, but they need twenty-five percent, more than twenty-five percent of the front yard to be covered, and it's gonna be thirty-six percent, so they're asking for that. But the reason for that is to allow for that bypass lane, which is something that we're gonna discuss as a planning commission, come when it comes back towards summer. The variance for section, uh, which allows a width of eighteen feet to the west approach, which exists, and twenty feet to the west, which exists, um, and exceeds fourteen feet for eighteen feet, um, so that people can pass, and that just really kinda makes a lot, a lot of sense. So you'll have to talk about that at that point in time, we'll have illustrations and that, because it'll be a planning issue, not a zoning board of appeals issue. So we'll get that back before you with some graphics. Um, you may actually use this one as an example of, of why and how for that.
One note on the driveway too, is, uh, we are using the existing curb cuts. The existing house does have a horseshoe driveway now, um, with the, with the wider motor court right at the front door. Uh, but we are using the same exact curb cuts, that's how this shape was, was built.
It wasn't, it wasn't fashioned because it was a perfect semicircle or anything like that. It was fashioned based off the existing curb cuts, which they did use, so there's not gonna be anything further, there's not gonna be any cuts into the right of way, or anything like that, barring any sewer caps or anything else that has to happen.
And there's just minor discussions about, we might have to repour the concrete aprons at the street just 'cause they might get damaged during construction, and then the slope of one is a little steep, so we might have to repour a little bit of it to make it more accessible.
And that'll do two things. One is, they'll replace it if they break it, and two is, um, it'll become more ADA compliant after the fact. Um, so that's, that's the thing. Slope and pitch are something that, um, it's already down there, they won't correct it until the next time they go through with the sidewalk, little gram, but they're gonna do it anyway. So that's kinda where we're at with that. So at this point in time, um, unless there's any other questions that you might have of me or any discussion points that involve me, um, Mr. Chair, I'll give it back to you, and, uh, happy to answer anything you have.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for public participation.
Can I give my name and?
Name and address, please.
Uh, Juliana Witten, one-two-seven-two-six Boardman. I'm just here representing neighbors to see, um, thank you, 'cause that's an eyesore this year right now. Our major only concern really is, once they start to tear down, 'cause that place has to be full of like mold and mildew and everything else, how are they gonna kinda keep those spores and everything else, everything kind of not blowing all through the neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, if I could, because that's certainly a legitimate concern and a fair question. Um, whenever there's a demo permit, things have to happen. We have to get a gas requirement letter, we have to get a, a DTE retirement letter, we have to get a utility retirement letter, meaning that the curb, the sewer will be blocked, um, and also the water will be shut off at, you know, at the stop box at a minimum, unless they're putting in a new service. Also to that, there will also be road certification required, make sure that there's no roads on site that were all sudden, the house goes down and five million rats run into the neighborhood, that's not gonna happen. And then also with that too, is that during the demo, they're required to put water on the site in order to keep the dust and flow down for that. And, uh, what we have is, is that either they'll provide an RPC valve, or we have RPC valves that they can get at DPW and actually connect to our water service, our fire hydrant, and use that, which will make it a lot easier to keep the dust down on that. And the dust is where you run into problems. There's also gonna be an asbestos certification, that there's no asbestos in the air, or that will come out during the process, and all of that'll be trucked out of there, and all that'll have to be dealt with before they can just start knocking, they don't just pull up a bulldozer and seal it goodbye. So there is, even though it looks like that, there's a lot of process that goes into this. But to assure the neighbors that, uh, we don't anticipate any problems with that portion of this, um, with all due respect, we've worked with all these people before, so we're quite comfortable.
And there is a lot that will have to be done, admittedly.
Can you speak into the?
Yeah, so they were, living in that house, or the woman living in that house was a hoarder. Um, and they took a lot out, but there's still a ton in. And the basement is full of, I'm sure, hazardous materials. Um, so there will be, um, the appropriate companies that have to come and dispose of everything, 'cause I'm not doing it. But we are well aware of all that, um, and it's documented, and we will address it a hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, uh, we'll go ahead and close public participation and move to commission comments. Gail?
Um, Hank, you said that they're gonna use the existing curb cuts. Do we know what the width is? It's smaller than the eighteen that it's going to, that it's gonna fan out, or? I'm just trying to look at the thing in proportion, and especially, you know, I agree on trying to bypass or something like that, yet they show a car right in the middle of the driveway, nobody's gonna get around it, you know, if somebody parks the way that it is. I'm just curious as to what the cuts are, you know, at the curb. That was my first question.
Okay, so they're, they're not varying, I believe, the one cut on the one side was, correctly, from our, but I think it's fourteen on the one side?
Uh, one, sorry, I know I sent you the dimension.
Yeah, so he'll, he'll have it, it wasn't even planned. Let's, let's give him a minute, and he'll be able to come up with those numbers. But the point being, they're not changing.
Okay.
So, um, and as far as like the, uh, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold the cars to being to scale.
That car is actually, uh, drawn at about seven feet wide, which is a standard length or width. Um, and like, when you go to a parking lot, the parking spots are either ten by twenty, or nine by eighteen. Uh, and this driveway is eighteen foot wide, so it would accommodate two cars, and we did compress it to the eighteen foot width versus the twenty foot width, which the zoning board of appeals requested when we did the house across the street five years ago. We originally showed it at twenty, 'cause it's a tighter radius, and then they asked to bump it to eighteen.
Could I choose me to sit up, either sit at the table or come up here, so that?
So the, uh, it's either, you go nine-foot wide lanes or ten-foot wide lanes, and we did go to the nine-foot width to reduce some of the impact. Um, and then burming up the island will help screen the view from the street as well. And we did, we worked on the project across the street, and they accepted the eighteen-foot width over the twenty-foot width. That's the change that we made last time. Um, and the, the curb cut, uh, I thought I had in my phone, but I don't see it here this second, but it's just matching the existing apron footprint. Um, so the driveway's the same, his, the driveway now does narrow to a quick pinch point at ten feet wide for a small part of it, but then in front of the front door, it's almost thirty feet wide, and then narrows back to ten. It's a really irregular, you know, tough-to-navigate, um, shape.
The other thing too, um, just to point out is that the house, as it sits now, has a huge area in front of it, and a port of share that goes across the front part of the driveway. So actually, the amount of paving and the amount of area there that's devoted to the driveway and the front entryway of the house will be significantly reduced in this plan.
So I did find the note here, so the, the west entrance at the street is eighteen foot wide, and then the apron narrows to sixteen foot wide. So the driveway at that point is sixteen foot wide, and then, and then, like I said, it pinches down to ten awkwardly, and then expands back out. The east entrance is twenty foot wide at the street, and then sixteen foot wide at the back of the apron, and then, and then pinches back down and gets fat again the other way.
Code allows for two-three foot flares max, so what you're seeing at the street, you're looking at approximately six feet more than it actually is, because it's street flares. So that's, that's typically how they go. They shoot out like that, so that no matter where you come in from, you're not cutting across somebody's lawn at the bottom, you're actually hitting driveway from the street.
Thank you. Additionally, one of the things you addressed, Hank, was I had a issue with the front window well in the lower level, and the talk is that you're gonna move it to the western wall and move where the, um, generator is, and you'll probably have, except that they're at two different depths, you know, walls in the basement. You know, one wall goes here, and then it's a little stepped in, as far as the two bedrooms downstairs. So they, the window wells will not exactly be next to each other as far as the width is concerned, because in the basement, it's, it's stepped in a little bit at that point. So that you'll have it coming out, you know, the window well on that side, and then farther down, you know, on the other, and that will be straight there, and that would be dealt with as far as how far out you could go in the window well, 'cause they were really quite, quite big. Looking at the design, it was really nice. I questioned, and it's all again, and the money you're spending and what you're doing in it, and just looking to the future, that when you ended up having, I noticed that your lavatory on the first floor is accessible both from the house and from the pool, okay? And that you don't have any shower in there. It's strictly just a lab, and that's what they're coming in for, for that purpose, you know, in doing it, and that you had more room in the mudroom and then in the changing room, and there wasn't a need for having a shower, or maybe there's gonna be a shower outside, I don't know. Okay. I had the windows, I liked the architectural detail of the windows themselves. I found the half-moons on top of the windows to be a contradiction to the shape and the architectural detail of the house.
That's what my wife likes.
You know, 'cause you've got square windows up above, and then you've got these three half-moons in the back and two over the front door. You know, um, I'm trying to think of the other issues that I had in looking at it. Basically, it's not like anything that's in that section, okay? Originally, that section was one hundred percent ranches. And then the house farther down, it's a colonial, burned down, and they built a colonial. And then your house was the only other change in there to do it. So it's sort of a quasi, as we describe it, a quasi-colonial, and it's a little unusual as far as its look is concerned, to being, you know, architecturally, um, similar to what's existing. But the plan looks good. I've seen metal roofs, I've never seen this one that's more architecturally serving as siding, it almost looks like, in the front, when you're around the celestial windows that are up above, that the roof is coming down and the windows are in them, rather than just a metal roof.
There's one on May Dean, right across from the school. The, um, Oprah's house has the same type of.
There's also one on May Dean up by, I wanna say, Huntington.
Huntington Road? It's on the corner of Honey, I'm very familiar with that, but there, that's just a metal roof. There are windows coming out of the metal roof.
One on May Dean does have windows coming out of it.
Where is it?
Right across from Burton, right across from Field.
On a, uh, on the acre side? You know, it was, it, it was the width all combined that, you know, I had some issue with, you know, only because you're trying to make it very architecturally square, and then it's round. Okay, that's my comments for now, thank you.
Sarah?
My only question was, how did you decide on the exterior materials? Thank you.
So the exterior materials, uh, we came up with, uh, with a stone, which, which you may have, a sample of the stone right here. This is it, obviously, there's no water here, but, uh, this is the stone. And the idea for the stone was actually, um, kind of complementing the brick. And the idea for the stone was actually kind of complementing the brick on the house next door, which is kind of yellowish brick and very narrow. It was built a lot in the 60s. And that's what most of those kind of stone pieces going to be. When, this is just a sample board, but the, most of the stone actually is going to be the long pieces. Those are the larger ones called jumpers. Those are going to be just a little bit of an accent. The way it's specified, like 15% is going to be with the jumpers, 85% is going to be with the long ones, and we're going to go with the, with the yellowish and grayish to complement the brick next door. And then, then going together, the stone just complimented with a, with stucco. And this, the stucco, actually, we talked about, you can see here, actually, it's pretty fine application. Some stucco, it's really, like you see mostly in the south, is very rough. This is very smooth, but still has some texture to it. So these are the two materials we're using, using it. And we thought it would be, the colors and the materials will complement the neighborhood. There are other places in Huntington Woods that have stucco and stone, so that's, I thought that's, the two of them go together, and let's go with other places in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Eric, perhaps as a point of information, have you selected a roof color for matches with these?
Yes, I have the roof color too, I'm sorry. Just ask for it. Here, this is the roof color, which is charcoal, kind of a charcoal color, yeah.
And then is that going to be the color of the windows too? So it all, there's really only three elements?
Right.
Thank you for asking this question, that was my other question. Is that a stucco board or a private? What is the material?
No, it's actual stucco.
Okay.
True stucco is an entirely different thing, and it doesn't have any of the connotations that the old stucco board used to have, which used to be like a sponge. And it would always, if you got a season out of it in the old days, that used to be a, this is a completely different process than what that was.
Well, we're talking about finishes. What about the aluminum clad exterior finish on the second story?
That's the same color as the window. The same aluminum clad as the window, which is the same as the roof, the charcoal.
Is it panelized or is it...
Yes, aluminum panels. And it would be custom fabricated to clear those specific areas. The other material, which is minor, would be the limestone that we have on different steel, near the window in the cup of the window wells.
Anything else, Sarah?
No.
Chris?
No, my questions have been answered.
Sheldon?
I appreciate the effort that went into this, and I appreciate the investment that's been made, pardon me, it's thinking about being made in this city, and obviously is pretty well along. I do have some, some questions. Are there, Hank, maybe you would know, are there alternatives to visual and sound buffering that could go, that could reduce the size of the accessory building and, and take one of the variances off the table?
There always are. But then again, you run into aesthetics and how effective it's actually going to be. There's not going to be, like, even if you put like sound baffling on the outside, or you put sound baffling on the equipment, the equipment's still outside, so it's going to be inherently louder just by the location rather than inside. So the move for this is as much to give consideration to the neighbors as it is for them to have a place to store stuff, because, you know, other than that, they put it in the garage. But the reality of it is, is that this provides them with an opportunity to have a single space for everything and also deaden the sound, the longer life expectancy of both the equipment and the accessories. But to answer your question, yes, of course, there's all of it.
Okay. Just, I mean, I defer to the zoning board on making their decisions and the standards they use, which I know from my own experience there includes something that isn't a self-made problem. So, you know, you'll have to address that, depending on who asks the questions and what kind of questions, okay? But essentially, because the variance runs with the land, it has to be generally something that arises out of the configuration of the property itself as opposed to something that's particular to the use being made by the individual owner. And right now, there, I mean, there's nothing extraordinary about the shape of this lot that requires any specific attention. That's just gratuitous comment, and take whatever you want along with it.
I got one more note on that, too. So the, the standard size of the shed is 10 by 10 square, and that's like for storage purposes. And the house has a very modest-sized garage. So the addition is almost solely for the pool equipment to keep it contained. Like you said, makes the equipment last a lot longer. But then you can also, the way this is set up, the spa is elevated from the pool. So when it comes to winter time, you're making, you know, anyone knows the gunite pool is a very significant investment. You could separate the pool from the spa and continue to run the spa throughout the winter time, even when the pool's shut down.
Okay, you're talking to the wrong, yeah, you're talking to the wrong people.
It does.
Okay, I'm not the guy you got to convince. Okay. Hank, landscape has to conform to the plan as presented. After that, landscaping can change without any permits or permissions.
That's correct.
Okay. So, all I'm saying, and I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of misleading us or not telling us what their full intentions are. But I do remember one guy who said, "You want a window there? I'll put a window there." And you know what? After the house gets built, I'm going to take the window out, because I don't want the window there. Okay, and, and the answer was, he could do that. And I'm just addressing the issue of the placement of the garage and it's, and how it's faced and the landscaping that you commented on, saying that would reduce the light encroachment and the noise as people come in and out of the garage with respect to the neighbors. So that, I'm not accusing you of not wanting to do that or not doing that, but it's something that doesn't need anybody's approval to change at a later time. Okay. What's the, what's the color of the house on each side, east and west?
The neighbors?
Yes.
The color on the west is the yellowish brick, and the color on the east is a red brick in the front and then off-white yellow siding on the side.
Okay.
Yellow siding, I think it is.
Okay, because the colors, other than the roof, I mean, the, the features that you've described to us in terms of the stucco and the stone are pretty light, you know, and there are, this house will stand out now, with standing the shielding that's going along on the front in terms of the landscaping and that sort of stuff. I mean, it's a big house, and it will be readily visible. These are just comments. I'm not asking for anything in specific. Hank?
Yes.
What, what's the engineering that provides venting on a standing seam metal roof?
You can hot roof anything.
Yeah.
Yeah. Most, most, most high-end homes are getting away from venting.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, I noticed when I put, when I, when I put new shingles on my house, they had to put a bunch of, you know, venting warts in various places, like on the back porch and on the front porch.
I would defer to Mr. Green as far as what his intentions are, but I would surmise that they're looking more like something like a high roof.
Yeah, we're more likely going to do hot roof, and if not, it's going to be what's called a soffit vent and a ridge vent. So there won't be no boxes, what used to do in old Huntington Woods homes.
Okay, got it. That's just a mechanical question. So it seems to me if we were to provide, and, sorry, Rick, I'll save this for later when we close discussion. Go ahead. If you've got any further comments? His chair?
Yeah, so, Hank, can you talk me through all of the variances and how if one of those gets turned down? So if we were to approve this tonight, one of those four items gets turned down, what would happen? Does it come back here or...
It would either come, it may not come back if it's a redesign to comport with code. So like, let's just say the ZBA says, "No, I get what you're saying, but you're not going to get this driveway variance," just for example. And they came back and they said, "Okay, well, I can read the code, I can have 10 feet, it just, I can't back anything out of it, I can't go around it, so that means when I have people over, all these cars will have to back out of the driveway." If that's what the zoning board of appeals sends, and he comes back to us with a driveway that's 10 feet wide, we would issue the permit because that's allowed in the code to have the 10-foot-wide driveway there, so it wouldn't come back before this.
So you'd sign off on that change?
So I would sign off on that administratively. So you're looking at an area, it's, the R1A district is the only district where these are permitted, and they have to have a minimum of 160 feet, and I believe his is 162 and change. So that's kind of where he's at with that. So, because lots legit for having, and he's keeping the curb cuts. So that's just the one thing. As far as the window wells, he's already taken that off the table because he's willing to do that, to deal with that, and that's a minor thing that's, you know, that wouldn't come back. That just, before, how I would act with that is that if it comes to me for approval of the plans, and that's still there, after them saying they would take it out of the equation, then they wouldn't get the permit. So, because they have to match, whatever they come in with their building plans has to match what you approved them for. So the other thing was, and the maximum lock coverage. The maximum lock coverage and the shed size is driven by one of the same. So if they take out the 100 square feet, right, and they only need 66 square feet, so if they took out the second 100 square feet, then the need for that variance goes away, and consequently, the lock coverage variance goes away because they don't have the shed for that to begin with. So then it means they only have a 10-foot shed, and they have to figure out a different way to accommodate their pool storage. And whether that means a different idea or a different mousetrap, and they go back to the zoning board of appeals for that, that's something that they can do, or if they come up with a different argument or a different set of circumstances. So that's the driveway, that's the lot, the lot width, and the front yard coverage, which again, we talked about already. So that's how those variances would be dealt with, assuming the ZBA says no to all of them. Now, the ZBA, of course, can give them one, can give them none, can give them all. So that depends on what they, what they want to do, because that would be the province of the variances. Your job is that if it makes sense, and it looks like it's something that's either A, been there before, a generally accepted practice, and it just doesn't meet the exact letter of the code, or makes some kind of sense, you would pass it on to the ZBA for their interpretation of whether or not it does, and that's the final. And that's whether, that's what they would be going for. So, did I miss something, Rick, or is that, pretty well got you?
No, so if, if any of these variances don't go through, none of this would come back to us, right?
No, it would go back, as long as what they did to, as long as what they did to eliminate it changed, like I would expect, the final building plan, if they get turned down to the shed, the final building plan would have a shed that's 100 square feet, not 200. So that would have to be there, because whatever they, whatever they do is going to turn in for building permit, it's going to be reflective of what you, as a planning commissioner, doing your site plan review say, and what the zoning board of appeals determines is a necessary thing.
And then walk me through what the plan is with stormwater and how that gets reconciled.
Okay, fair question. So whenever we have a new house, we always send the plan in, and the drainage and grading plan is in to NOAAIC and FROSS, who's our city engineer. NOAAIC and FROSS comments on that. And then what happens is, is if there's some corrections, which there were notice, as you saw in the letter that you gave, were provided with, then they go back to the contractor and they discuss a way of doing it, meeting it, or something that's going to not necessarily need a variance, but some way of rectifying this without being injurious to the neighborhood or anything like that. Sometimes, as Tim said, you end up allowing a little bit or something that ties in, but for the most part, that's the last resort. So that's what Tim was talking about. He prefers to have it kept on-site, dealt with on-site, and he talks about a couple remedies, including keeping the size, changing the size of the pipe, the capacity and that. So they'll work that out, and at the end, nothing will happen with the drainage and grading until it satisfies NOAAIC and FROSS. So what will happen is, I'll get a letter from Tim, other Tim, sorry, we got two Tims, from Tim Germain, who's our NOAAIC and FROSS representative that reviews this for us, that says, "Hank, we're good to go on this." And at that point in time, I'll have the assurance and a seal from a degree professional that that's going to hold the water and they anticipate that being fine. And at that point in time, the city would approve that.
Okay, and is it your take that NOAAIC and FROSS is just forcing the issue with stormwater created from the site itself and the new construction, or are they being held responsible for neighbor stormwater?
They're being held for the water that's on the property. So how it gets there is a different thing. If they took up and they burned all the edges of the property and only had their water, would they have less to deal with? Yeah, of course they would. But the reality is, is that the plan that they're trying to design and the plan that NOAAIC and FROSS is looking for, is they're looking for them to deal with all the water there. They're not looking for West Nile pools or Zika pools or anything like that. They're looking for the water to leave. Now, here's the Huntington Woods reality. Unless you live on the hill, you got blue clay. And that's what every one of the builders, in fact, well, I can tell you right now that everybody up here that lives there, except for Gail, who lives, you know, up on the other side of Huntington Woods, she has sand. Everybody else has got blue clay, myself included. So these lots don't drain real good. So when you have a new lot and you have this, that's why they want to have an engineered field and show how you're doing it. That's why it's important NOAAIC and FROSS review all these. At the end of the day, too, we have what's called the as-built. So before they get their final CFO, they give us an as-built survey showing that they've matched the grades and everything is flowing in the direction, and they'll get that. That survey showing the as-built grades will also go to NOAAIC and FROSS, who then compares it to the original one that was approved. And then they show, okay, they've complied with what we've asked them to do. So that's how that is. So the engineering is actually a twofold process. You don't normally see as much of it as I provided you here because, number one, they provided all the documents instead of just a generic plan, and number two, because NOAAIC and FROSS is involved in it, and this is a big lot, which potentially has a lot of water, we want to make sure that we get it right.
I find myself a little uncomfortable with the amount, the lot coverage and the amount of impervious area given the stormwater issue. Now, I'm not saying that it won't be solved by NOAAIC and FROSS, but it seems like we might want to see how it's solved before we go through with this.
That's up to you. I, I don't get a vote.
We also have the issue that there is five voting members right now, and it takes five votes to pass this.
Rick, can I also ask another question?
Yes.
When I've been looking back at the plans, two things. The lower level, you have three window wells, correct? One by the dining or table space in the, in the south, okay? And you have one on each of the respective... And you have one on each of the respective lower-level bedrooms?
Right.
Of which both of those are gonna be on the east side, and you have those set up for three windows...
West side.
West side, excuse me, on the west side. And you have those set up for three windows in each of those bedrooms. It's your plan in moving it from the front to the side in the front bedroom, that it will still be a three-window well and a three-window well in the other bedroom?
Yes.
And one there, and then to comply. Looking at your roofline and your gutter from the second floor, where you have to move that gutter, because I don't know how you're gonna get your windows in, depending on where you place it, I was trying to look at for doing that, that that gutter might be moved, not necessarily that it's gonna be in the front, because you probably don't want it discharging towards the front, I don't know, but you had them only discharging at the sides and the backs, nothing coming forward in the front.
We have one gutter that's just going down in the front.
Over by the garage?
No, 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 talking about where the window well is.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question I had, and Sarah had brought it up, was, had you thought of any other materials besides stucco? I mean, usually stucco you'll see with stucco and timber. You'll find it on tutors with stone, but you don't usually find it on a contemporary home with...
Yes, Liz. That's my wife wants it like that, so that's what we're doing.
You know, I mean, your other house across...usually we say we want you to have brick.
Right.
And you do have brick across the street.
I see 14 other materials in the house across the street.
Architecturally speaking, it's very common these days, for the last 10, 15, even 20 years, to use stucco in contemporary homes, and also mix stucco with stone and stucco with bricks, so it's all those materials all goes together. The question is the application and the size and the amount, and that's what we're doing here, so I think it's right for this kind of application.
I mean, Tabakman houses are all stucco, so...yeah.
Yeah, I think if you go through Bloomfield Hills and that, some of those newer houses, it's limestone, stucco, it's very modern look right now.
I've seen them, selling real estate, I see them, so, you know, I'm familiar with that, but not in Huntington Woods, but it's like bringing something new into Huntington Woods.
Well, there was that one Mediterranean house on Huntington, right? Was that one?
Mm-hmm.
It was up to Liz. That's what we would build, right here. She wants a Mediterranean house, and I had to compromise to get to where we're at now.
And she's right. Arch windows on the Mediterranean house would look very nice.
Yes.
With square windows, they look a little odd. Correct me if you...
I got one comment on the engineering. Hank, if you could go to the front page, to yours?
To the PEA plan, I think it's like page, the second page.
Good.
Yep. So if you look at this plan, basically around, so the bottom side, the bottom left corner, where the sports court is, and then the whole south property line, and even coming from the terrace, all those dashed lines, that's all pipes. And the whole, the west side along the sports court and the whole south line, that'd be a perforated pipe. And really, the only intention of that is to capture water from the neighbors before it infiltrates our site and causes further damage. And what the, Tim Germain, the consultant from NOAC and FROSS, he's simply asking for calculations to provide a volume of water that those pipes can hold. And looking at these pipes and having to do this every single project in Birmingham, you know, other municipalities, but those pipes can hold quite a large volume, and it's already planned as an eight-inch pipe. The early indications is maybe there's gotta be an enlarged pipe in a certain area to hold a greater volume, or possibly we take another pipe and put it underground as like a storage tank, to help temporarily store some of that water, to account for typically a 10-year storm event before it passes on to the next lot. But right now, all the water from this site just goes to the southwest corner and just sits there, and right now, the grade's so flat, it really just sits in the whole backyard of this site alone. So we're fully confident that we can come to a solution, and Tim Germain, I think even indicated in his letter, it's just a matter of providing the sizing and calculations of those waters.
That's the southeast corner that Hank was just...
Yeah.
You're saying it accumulates at the southwest corner at the...
Yeah, the southwest corner.
At the upper end.
It's the lowest spot of all the houses right there.
Yeah, and actually, the back corners, I mean, because back in this corner, too, if you walk up the driveway, I mean, it wouldn't...
It starts at the sports court now. You go there now, there's six inches of water.
I did go there.
So we're trying to capture all that, and then also the back, the south property line is purposely organic, because it's likely gonna be some sort of rain garden with, like, say, grasses and like, you know, plant material that can handle wet feet, because that spot is almost impossible to fully grate out and make dry. So it's gonna be a rain garden-esque type landscape in the rear, because the lot to the south, 100% of it pitches straight, you know, they got pool deck, everything pitches here. So we're taking extreme measures to try and counter the water on the site now. And it's just a matter, you know, adding a little bit more detail and calculations of the pipe sizing.
Okay, so have you...I'm comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with NOAC and FROSS, so if you're doing little check boxes on what you think will, who will say yes and who will say no. But what is...you have two options. You can table it. You can decide if you're confident that it's going to pass tonight. Any other options?
Well, here's what you might do as a courtesy. You might declare a recess for like three to five minutes to allow them to have a discussion, and then reconvene in five minutes and see what a decision might be from them. If they want a table, it's typically a courtesy that we extend to the residents and the people that are coming here. So that'd be up to them. If they need a few minutes, that's another option, if they want to discuss that.
I have a question. If I fill out my table and it doesn't pass, can we do it again?
Here's the thing about doing it again. There would have to be a change, because this would've been voted down in the capacity to dissent. You can't keep coming back until you get the vote you desire. So what you would have to do is...I know, but you can't. So what would have to be is that something would have to change, plus I then would have to notice everybody again. So everybody within 300 feet would get the notice again for this, and I'd also, because of doing that, if you wanted to, you could do it. I couldn't guarantee you that it would be any different than the April meeting, you know what I mean?
We couldn't really do the agreement, because he will be here. So it's gonna be May, which pushes me back another couple months.
Hank, my two cents, for what it's worth, is I'm not sure there's anything in particular that they can decide to do with the five minutes. I mean, their plans are their plans.
No, whether or not they wanted the table...
Oh, okay.
Was what I was thinking.
I would concur. That's fine.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that. If you guys want to talk it over, if you want to plunge ahead or tell us now that you want to table it...sorry, Rick, I don't need to take over.
We're gonna plunge ahead.
There wasn't any outstanding questions that weren't answered amongst the five of you, correct?
We feel okay to proceed.
And any of the ones that were borderline questions are all ones that we can't get a permit without those questions answered by the city consultants prior.
All right, Hank, are there any caveats to the approval? I think the motion would have to include, subject to zoning board of appeals...
Subject to the zoning board of appeals, granting of the variances, as prayed for, subject to the change of the window well location, to eliminate the need for the zoning board of appeals to see that, and subject to the NOAC and FROSS approval of the drainage and grading plan and their review of the property.
And moving the air, getting permission or not?
They will have to do that.
With the AC and...
Their mechanicals won't get it.
Generator, okay.
Which is part of the...
So ZBA variances, window wells, and NOAC and FROSS storm.
Right.
That is correct. Now, they've indicated that they do have support from the neighbor for the utility farm on the side, they just don't have an actual letter at this point, so that's my understanding.
Hey, would someone like to vocalize a motion for that?
I'll do it, because I don't have any better sense. I move to approve the plan as presented, as meeting all of the guidelines and standards, subject to the grading and drainage approval from the engineers, subject to the approval of variances that are required by the plan. Do I have to detail the variances?
No, you could say any and all variances or corrections to eliminate the need.
Yeah, like you said, okay. Variances or corrections to eliminate the requirement for the variances, and subject to the installation of the window wells in accordance with the ordinance. I think I've got, I think that's it.
All right, we need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congrats, passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Want your plans back?
Hank, we'll just take a minute to clear the room or clean up. All right, item six was tabled, so moving on to item seven, matter of discussion of planning commission priority list, selection of additional work.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, again, the only reason I even brought it up, it was asked to bring up the priority list and selection of additional work project for this meeting. At that point in time, I was unaware that we were gonna be missing half of the planning commission. So the option for you is, is we can go ahead and have a little discussion. You might want to wait and take action for the others until you have a fuller complement of board members, or you can defer to the next meeting and all together. Whatever your pleasure is, that's what I'm here to accommodate.
I would suggest we defer consideration till we have a fuller complement and for more input from more of the members of the commission. I don't know what the sense of the...
It's not a voting matter, right?
It is, if you're taking it off the agenda, so it's possible to defer. If that's what your intent is, Sheldon, then you'll need us.
Yeah.
Can you, could you just review the other communications that you've put in here? Or it looks like preliminary rezoning...
Well, that was part of the priority list.
Oh. That, those are not communications that have been sent already?
Well, those are, no, no, those are, that's part of, and I could address that briefly if you want to redo that, because I didn't put it in here. What I did was to give you a little bit of information as to what's involved in that and the process, because based on your, you know, based on what we talked about last time with that, I'm giving you like an idea of what it takes to get further down the road on that. So what I was anticipating when I put that together was a discussion and go forward with it, but I have to notify, there's certain legal requirements that I have to make, you just can't go rezon somebody's property. So there's contacts that have to be made, there's notices, there's signs that have to be placed on the property, there's advertising that has to be done in order to do that. I was giving you a little bit of what has to go into that, so you can kind of see what it is. And there's excerpts from there, and what I did with that was I also included a list of what's permitted in the business district and what's permitted in the TD district. So you can kind of see what they get, you know, where the bang for the buck is, so to speak. And I did that based on Sheldon's question, his last, where he was concerned that, you know, rezoning somebody out of business or, you know, being more restrictive, and that's in the code. So all these are right out of the code for you to look at. If you'd like to take a look at it, get some questions together, talk about it next time with more people, I'm happy to do whatever you would like. But that was all part of the other.
I would, I'd move to defer.
I agree. And when you bring it back to the next meeting under the zoning districts and you have footnotes, numbers ones or whatever, will we see those footnotes?
Yeah, you'll have all of that.
So I heard a motion and maybe a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to public participation, there's no public, so we'll open and close that. I was looking for a motion to adjourn.
You know, if somebody votes against the motion to adjourn, it doesn't pass.
I'm going home, so...
I'm just saying. Okay, you need five votes.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye. Dodged another bullet.
Don't do it, Sheldon.